Good evening and welcome to the March 10th, 2022 meeting of the Hefner Township Planning Commission. Kelly, would you call roll please? Or Margie, would you call roll please?
Mr. Capuzzi.
Present.
Mr. Chen.
Present.
Ms. Dobbs. Mr. Fjord Pondo.
Present.
Mr. Garrett.
Present.
Ms. Phillips. Mr. Montessor.
I ask everyone to rise and join me with the saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, our first agenda item this evening is the reverse subdivision plan for Kenmore Road. Kathmer Road, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name's Chris Yon. I'm the civil engineer for this project. And so what this is, is on Kathmer Road, most of the lots are 50 feet wide. There are two lots here in this case that are each 25 feet wide. And so what we're doing is consolidating those two lots together, merging them together to make a 50-foot-wide lot, and then propose to construct a new single-family home. And so this plan is here for approval of the reverse subdivision. If we were just building the home on the lot as it started, we wouldn't have to be here, but because of the reverse subdivision is why we're here. And so this plan that's in front of you is just the record plan showing the two 25-foot lots that would be consolidated into one 50-foot lot. This first page of the plan says what we call illustrative, where it's just a colored version of the plan with the new house, front porch, there's a one-car garage and a driveway area to pull in. We have a deck in the back and an egress well. Page three of the plan said is the existing conditions slash vicinity, so you can see other properties in the area. We have sheet four is our grading and utilities slash post-construction stormwater management plan, and so it shows the utilities in the front connecting to those existing utilities in Kathmer Road. We have some rainwater conductors and a yard drain in the front to collect stormwater and pipe to an underground stormwater management system in the rear. There is a, we did do some infiltration tests with pretty decent infiltration rate, and so that system is sized to infiltrate the runoff and provide the required rate and volume control. Page five are the stormwater management details and other construction details. Page six are the, is the erosion sediment control plan that shows the silt fence in the rear, topsoil stockpile, construction entrance, some tree protection fencing and a limited disturbance. And then page seven is the, are the erosion control details. We did appear in front of the Shade Tree Commission last week. We received approval, although they did request more street or more replacement trees. We had shown one, we had an arborist report that showed basically all the trees on the lot were dying, dead or diseased, and Shade Tree thought that some of them should be, should have replacement for them. And so we, we agreed to do that, and so we didn't revise the plans yet, but I believe that's going to result in about six or seven more replacement trees.
And you have room on the lot to put all those replacement trees?
We talked about putting another, I don't know if I can see if I'm allowed to edit this. No. Talked about putting one, here I could just circle this area with a hand. We talked about one more dogwood in the front to align with the two dogwoods that are already there between the sidewalk and curb, maybe another shade tree in the front yard on the left-hand side, another one in the rear, in the back left and on the back right, and then the difference will be paid for as in the fee in lieu, so they could be planted elsewhere. We did receive a review letter from the township engineer that is basically a will comply letter that we are not requesting any variances, we're not requesting any, any waivers. There are a couple items that I need to discuss with the township engineer, just to determine the best way to address it, but they will be addressed.
Which items do you need to address with the township engineer?
I know one of them was, I want, we know number two, we know that the sewage facilities planning module exemption is required, and so we did submit that with the application, just trying to figure out the best way to process it goes to Upper Darby in this case in City Philadelphia, and so we need everyone to sign off. I think I wanted to talk about the one with the additional spot elevations, just to make sure we were clear on, on what was needed, but it, not an issue. I did actually already talk to someone about revising the drainage area to include the limited disturbance. Basically, the only thing we didn't include was a small piece for the, the new utility that goes through the street, so we'll include that. Yeah, I'm sorry. So number two was the one for the sewage facilities planning module. Number seven was the one that asked for some additional spot elevations. Number eight was the one that asked for the drainage area to equal the limited disturbance. Number 12, all perimeter silt fence should be super silt fence. We asked if we could do silt sock instead, and she said that was fine. I think that's all that we talked about, but those were, they're all, like I said, they all will comply, they're things we, we will address. We just wanted a little clarity with the township engineer on how to do it and what would be acceptable.
Okay, I'll open it up to questions from the board. Julia, you have any questions?
So my first question on the township engineer's letter, zoning line item one regarding the median setback, I notice on the page three where it's overlaid next to the existing houses, that the proposed built area is set back further than all the other buildings, houses on the road, which doesn't, I was wondering how you plan on addressing that.
So my understanding of that code section is there's a required front yard setback, and that section requires you to look at the others on the street, and if they are further from the street, then you would have to be pushed back further, but I don't believe it gives you the ability to go any closer to the street. So I think we are, we're stuck at that front yard setback where we are.
I was just bringing that up because I was hoping it might help with some of the tree issue by making a larger backyard, like all of the other houses on the street.
Julia, first, if you could talk into your mic, just so we get on the recording. But just to answer your question, Chris is absolutely right. There is a median setback regulation, but the more stringent regulation is always in play and always takes precedent. So even though the houses that are very, very old, who are encroaching into that front yard setback right now are further back, this house being new couldn't encroach in that front yard setback without first receiving a variance, so we wouldn't be able to move it, even though that is the median setback in that street.
Yeah, okay, understood.
Yep.
And the second thing I wanted to ask was about the driveway in the front. I've noticed that most of the other houses in the back have the garage tucked behind the house, so by introducing a garage part of the house in the front and then the double wide driveway, it is breaking from the rhythm of the road.
Not sure how to answer that one. I agree with you that I'm looking at the aerial here, I do see some where there is a garage all the way in the back. I also see some others where people park on the side of the house. A little bit of this is going along with what you said with the location of the house, because it's pushed back, it makes a little more sense to put it in the front, because we don't have as much room in the back to try to put it back there. It kind of takes up the whole backyard.
Okay, that was it.
Hey, thank you. Rob?
Yes, it's Chris, right?
Yes.
Chris, I'm looking at sheet four of seven. I'm looking at the property that's located on the northeast side of the site. Property line that's there, it looks like it's a very narrow existing lot. Am I correct in seeing that on the drawing?
You're talking about the, the northeast? So, so this lot here?
Yes. What is the, what are the dimensions of that lot? Is that a single lot?
So I think if, yeah, if we go to this vicinity plan and zoom in, I think that's what I'd, I'd call a twin, and so if you, you see that here, that there's a kind of faint line going in between, and it looks like the, the two roofs are different colors, and so my assumption is that's a, a twin building with unit on each side.
Rob, there are several twins in that block, sets of twins.
Okay, and as far as accessible for a car, there's no parking on that site?
I don't, I don't know, I don't see one there, but that, that property's not part of this development, so I, we didn't survey that or, or look at, at that one.
Okay, I was just curious, in that it seems like a very narrow site, is that an individual property owner, or is that, is that split?
Don't know the answer to that.
I, I can actually answer that. It is a twin. Like I said, that neighborhood is very old. That's why you have these 25-foot lots that need to be consolidated, whereas a 25-foot lot is completely not, it's not usable today. Even our twins require a 38-foot wide lot at the building line. So, so all those houses are just predate the zoning code and are unfortunately zoned R4, which only allows for single-family dwellings and does not allow for twins these days. So they're just very non-conforming, old houses that are, you know, just there and allowed to remain.
Okay. And also the dimensions of, I'm going to ask the question, and I know it's not part of what you're responsible for, but the dimension from the property line on the parcel that you're responsible for to the existing building that's, or the existing residence that's there, there's no, I don't see any indication of that distance. From, where is the new? What is the dimension from the property line here, there?
This property line?
The side yard.
The side yard to that house?
What's the side yard setback to the adjacent house to the east? Do you know?
I don't know. That wasn't picked up on the survey, and that, you know, that aerial I get from the, well, it's actually, it's a Microsoft map, and then we get some GIS data from the county, and we do our best to overlay that to kind of give a, a good representation of what's there, but that wasn't measured because it's, it's on the adjacent property.
Okay, so Kelly, you're saying that it's non-conforming, and there's nothing that can be addressed as far as how close that property line is to the existing residence that's there?
Right, so those houses have existed for probably near 100 years. So they, you know, they're very likely, I mean, they're obviously non-conforming in respect to the front yard setback, the use of the property as a twin, so at least one side yard setback. I find that generally with houses of this age, you're usually looking at a bet for a twin, about a seven-foot setback on the side that they're providing, but it doesn't necessarily affect this lot at all. And they're providing 10 feet, a 10-foot setback on either side instead of like eight and 12. So I don't, I don't know that you could necessarily really ask for better than that when the other one, the property on the other side looks very close as well.
Okay. And Chris, I know you addressed previously the tree in the back of the property. You said that that was going to be changed, or a landscape plan would be available for us to look at, or, the reason I'm bringing it up is, on the drawing, it says large shade tree native, I guess to the surrounding environment or surrounding neighborhood. I'm just questioning the location of that tree and maybe any other trees that may be planted against the HCPM that's there. Any considerations to maybe 10 years down the road when the roots of that tree are going to encroach on that?
When we went to the Shade Tree Commission, we talked about how many replacement trees they wanted, but then we did also talk about, you know, where they thought new trees could go. And to be honest, I've been to some municipalities where their position is, we want all the trees. We don't care if they're spaced five feet apart, like they'll figure it out, you know? They grow up and you get more trees kind of, or more branches out on the outside and less grow on the inside, and, you know, sometimes you'll see in a forest, it's kind of, it's like one big canopy, and if you take a couple trees down, you kind of see how one is all on one side. I understand your point, and I think that's why your Shade Tree Commission said, we think that the, the most you're going to get here is the one by the street, one in the front, and then two more in the rear, and that was, that was enough. So I think they were fine with that one that we had along the back. I think they thought one other on the rear left, one on the rear right, and one in the front.
It's, I'm asking this question because I don't know the answer, of course, but the location of that HCPM, is there a code requirement as far as the distance from the rear of the house?
Not that I, not that I recall off the top of my head. A lot of municipalities are 10 feet. I could look into that, and, you know, we, we try to balance the location a little bit. You don't want to get too close to the house.
Right.
You know, for a couple reasons, you know, one also being, you want to allow a little usable rear yard space.
Sure.
And so, you know, could we shift that a couple feet? We probably could. But we, we didn't have a comment on the, on the location of that. I don't recall.
Okay, the only, and the other reason I bring it up is, I live on Strathmore, and I'm, the exact location of this property on Strathmore, and that's the perfect spot to put some more trees in that corner, because that's where the sun goes down at the end of the day. And if that piece can be moved to allow more trees back there to create more shade, that'd be great.
My recollection from the shade tree was that they thought that one in the back and the one on the rear left, we were limited more by the size of the lot and not necessarily the location of the stormwater system. But we do need to, you know, I like to try to revise plans all at once, so we'll address any of your concerns, we'll address the engineer's concerns, address the shade tree concerns all at once, resubmit, and then Shade Tree will have to, have to approve it.
Just bringing it up. And there's one more I have. On sheet six of seven. On the actual plan for the built, for the, where the residence is going to be located, there's little boxes with squares. What is that? I couldn't find out what that was.
So it should be in the legend, but I agree it's not.
It's not.
So those are, what kind of shows faintly are the existing trees that are there where the house is, and then the, just an X is what we use to indicate a healthy tree to be removed, and then where we have the X with what I'll call a, a square turned 45 degrees, it, you know, looks a little bit like a diamond, those are the ones that we do for unhealthy trees. And so according to the arborist report, those were unhealthy. As I said, the Shade Tree Commission thought that for replacement purposes, they, they still wanted replacement regardless of what the arborist report said. But that, that's what those symbols are.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for submitting this. I'm, I'm interested to know what the building is going to look like. Does it include a garage? Did I miss that in here somewhere?
It, it does. It is a one-car garage.
It does include a garage.
Is there a way that this can be put on the board other than?
Where is, where's the, where's the one that was, the picture was taken?
Barbara Road. It's the mirror image of this.
Yes.
It looks like it won't be obtrusive in the neighborhood based on what I can see on the street view. So the only other question I have is, why have we maximized the building size at, and can't fit the trees that we need to put back on the property? I, I would like to see that the building is second to the trees that are being removed and replaced.
I guess I'd, I'd start with, you know, when we, we got the arborist report, we submitted a plan with only one replacement tree required. The Shade Tree thought that we should have more, and we said, okay. So I think from the starting point, I'd argue we don't need more trees, but we agreed to what Shade Tree asked for.
Have we received a copy of that arborist report, or it only goes to the Shade Tree Commission?
We didn't get a copy.
I haven't seen that.
It, it's really under the purview of the Shade Tree Commission. While we can, you know, chat about trees and maybe some of, a lot of our things occasionally, or some of our things occasionally overlap, we don't want to step on Shade Tree's toes. So that's, that's kind of their area of expertise unless it somehow affects both things.
In my experience, arborists like to take down trees, not to keep them.
Again, an argument for the Shade Tree Commission.
We can pass, I mean, you can pass our concerns on to the Shade Tree Commission, though, for them to evaluate.
I, I certainly can, but I, I'm 100% certain that the Shade Tree Commission already feels that way.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear if there are any other comments. I'd like to understand what revisions might be made here, but I think that at the end of the day, this house looks significantly larger than the other houses on the block, especially considering the immediate neighbor is a duplex. So this is going to completely dwarf anything in the area. And while I believe that that probably does increase property values by having a much more valuable property next to, next to the other properties on the street, I, I don't like to see something dramatically changing the character of a neighborhood, and this looks very large. So it occurs to me that a minor reduction in this, in the building footprint would allow more of the trees to remain, and without significantly taking away from what you're trying to do with this development. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jeff. Lou, any comments or questions? Okay. Steven?
Okay, I have a couple things. Number one, are you or is anyone on your staff a PLS?
I am not. However, the, we don't have a survey as part of my company, and so we work with the SHOC Group. They are PLS, and so they would be signing the.
All right, they have to seal the subdivision plan. Okay, aware of that. I walk past this property on a regular basis. I notice there are quite a few trees that were cut down along the front of the property and down the right side. They look to be six to eight-inch diameter, probably evergreen trees that were there, that aren't there anymore. Were those trees included in your arborist report, or were they cut down before your arborist looked at the property?
They were not in the arborist report.
They were not? So they were cut down before the arborist went out and inspected the property?
I, I assume so.
Okay.
I know that it was a discussion point at the Shade Tree Commission, and I know that the adjacent property owner was there as well, discussing those trees.
Okay, I mean, those trees all count towards replacement. You cut them down regardless, I mean, they should have been shown on the site plan as having been removed, and they should have been included in the tabulation, and since the arborist didn't see them, there's no way in knowing whether or not they were viable trees or they were diseased, so we'd have to assume they were viable. So I think at some point in time, we have to go back and recalculate the tree replacement values, and it's only going to bump up probably the amount of money you're going to have to pay a fee in lieu of.
That, that was a point of discussion at the Shade Tree Commission about those being removed, and the applicant was here, the adjacent homeowner who understood when those trees were removed, and Shade Tree did not require us to provide replacement for those. I don't know if it was part of the discussion point, but that was, they did ask for replacement for some of the other trees.
Okay, but I still think it's a zoning, I mean, it's a subdivision requirement that you account for all the trees on the property. So I think it's within our purview to, to have those, I'm looking at you, Kelly.
Yes.
You can see me looking at you?
I can see you.
Do you agree with me or not?
I can. Yeah, I mean, again, this is, we're into Shade Tree Commission territory. I'm, I'm not sure that we have, you know, the oversight. It, it's included in our ordinance, but generally, you know, kicks it to the Shade Tree Commission, which, Chris, it sounds like you have to go back to them.
I don't believe we have.
Or at least have to have them re-review the plans.
Correct.
Before, yeah. So this is going back to the Shade Tree Commission.
Okay.
Right.
I assume that those trees provided a significant, significant amount of screening for that adjacent property owner. Let me see. I had similar questions about the grading for the proposed driveway. Your drainage area map clearly shows the entire driveway going into the detention basin, but your spot elevations didn't reflect that, so I'm going to make sure you go back and make sure all that water gets into the seepage bed. And unfortunately, I was given a copy of your stormwater management report. You have a copy?
Yes.
Okay. I noticed that in designing the seepage bed, and I apologize to board members, this might get a little goofy, you used a 30-minute duration for your storms. A 100-year storm, 30-minute duration.
So the, the code requires that, so there's, there's two parts to this storm, right? There's the volume requirements, and there's the rate control requirements. And the volume requirements have the, the water quality calculation, the REV. The rate control has, through the 100-year storm can be rational, but then for the SCS is the two to the one.
I, I understand that. All I'm saying is, from a practical standpoint, I haven't seen a 100-year storm occur in a 30-minute period, ever. I've, in my experience, I've lived through three or four 100-year storms the last 40 years. They all seem to occur over at least a 24-hour period, not a 30-minute period. I think that the volume that you're providing for your recharge system is, is low. And I'll give you an example. In your report, you, you analyzed the two-year storm using rationale methodology and SCS methodology, okay? And the volume generated by SCS was 230% higher than it was for rationale. And you used the rationale formula to design the 100-year storm. Based upon your calculations, the 100-year storm creates 480 cubic feet of runoff over a drainage area of 3,000 and some square feet, I forget the exact number, which equates to about 1.8 inches of runoff for a 100-year storm. And everything I know about 100-year storms tells me that you usually get about eight inches of runoff, a rainfall in a 100-year storm. So I think personally that your basin is underdesigned. I think it needs to be bigger. And I don't know if the township engineer agrees with me or not, but that's been my experience. So can you explain why one methodology gives you such a higher value for a volume runoff compared to the other, other than the fact that one is a 24-hour period and the other is a 30-minute period?
Yeah, so my understanding of the way the rationale works is you have a time of concentration, and then you have a factor that multiplies the time of concentration times the rising limb and the, the falling limb.
Right.
And so that's how, if it's five minutes for a very small site like this, which it is, then we use a factor. then if you use a factor of three, you have the five minutes times three is 15 to get to the peak, and then you have the 15 coming down to the end.
Right.
And my understanding is that's a typical way of doing it and an accepted way. In terms of the difference between the SCS and the rational... although 233% sounds like a big difference, I'd also argue that's typical of the difference between the, if not more, between SCS and rational. And I think the reason why the code asks for certain things to be calculated in SCS and other things are permitted to be by rational.
They're permitted to be used... permitted to use rationale if approved by the township engineer, okay? Okay. I mean, the rationale was always meant, I believe, to be used to compute peak runoff rates, cubic feet per second. And if you look at the two analyses, the peak discharge for both two-year storms is pretty close to being the same value. But if the volume of water generated by the storm is equal to the area underneath your hydrograph, one is going to give you a larger volume than the other because of the duration, okay? And again, I personally think it's undersized, but I have to defer to the township engineer on those matters. But I'd like you to look at the calculations again and see if you're fully convinced that you're providing enough storage volume.
Angela, we'll go back and get with Chris and review that in a little more detail and possibly run the calcs ourselves, too.
Hopefully, you're understanding what I'm saying.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I see we have some visitors here. And we welcome any comments or questions you'd like to make or ask. Come to the podium, give us your name and address, and you can take your mask off if that makes you more legible or audible.
I am Cindy Eddy.
Hi, I'm John Eddy. Good evening to you.
Hi. We are at 311. So, we're...
We're on Strathmore.
We're on Strathmore. We're right next to the Flowers property, okay?
Sorry.
Same side, yeah.
Okay.
So, our corner and their corner meet.
And we're kind of downstream of the new property that's proposed. We also walk by every day, walk our dog around the block.
So, our home already has a problem with the water runoff from the houses and driveways that are right behind us from the twins. As she had mentioned, they were built a long time ago before stormwater management was a concern. During heavy rains and when it rains after the ground has been frozen or saturated, our basement takes on water. And equally, if not more important, during these bad winters, that water runoff freezes on our driveway, which is very hazardous because that's the only way we could get from our house to the sidewalk. And no matter how much salt or chemical we put on there, the runoff just, you know, it freezes, and it's hazardous. We've had the Haver Town Rain Garden and the Storm Water Assessment people come and look at our backyard, and they've said there's nothing we can do about the houses there. We could ask them to put a storm...
Rain barrels.
Like a rain barrel in the gutter, but there's nothing we can do about the driveways that are there, and the rain barrels fill up really quickly. We're afraid that their little seepage bed is not going to be appropriate for the amount of runoff for the size of that house plus the driveway. According to our own research, we... from the Washington State University College of Agricultural, Human, and Natural Resource Sciences, for every 10-foot by 10-foot of, you know, roof surface or covered surface, one inch of rain produces 62 gallons of water. And for 30 by 30, it would produce 558 gallons of water. And this house is, you know, looks like it's twice that size, not even counting the driveway.
Almost twice that.
Yeah. And, you know, and the whole thing slopes down to Strathmore. So, any of that water that's not captured in that little seepage bed is going to hit our properties and add even more water that we're dealing with every time it rains hard.
Yeah, so, we did some calculations, and we figured out how much rainwater we would be talking about. So, we had the figure she talked about, 62 gallons per, what, 30 by 30?
Yeah, I mean, we weren't looking at gallons, not at the rate.
But so, we figured the area of the house, the area the house takes up, and that was...
Was it 1740 square feet?
And then the driveway is about another 450.
Multiply that by what the university is saying, and we're looking at... for every inch of rain, we're looking at 1,358 gallons. Is that really going to fit in that tiny little...
Of water.
You know, basin?
So, then we took a look. What is this 100-year history that you hear about? So, we found a website that gives the NOAA statistics for heavy rain in the Philadelphia area. We found out for the last 10 years, the average heavy storm is about four inches of rain in a day. And...
And it could go up to eight inches.
That would account for 5,431 gallons from this one property. And then back in 2013, we had a day with eight inches of rain, which is almost 11,000 gallons.
And where is all that excess rain going to go? Onto our properties.
Well, it's got to go somewhere.
Yeah.
But it seems to us like it's going to overflow that holding tank.
Very, very quick.
I have similar concerns, as you heard. Just for your information, we generally... civil engineers generally work in cubic feet, not gallons.
Yeah.
So, your number of 1,300 and some gallons is 180 cubic feet.
Okay.
And for reference, their storage seepage bed has a volume of 480 cubic feet.
So, it should be ideally enough. Okay.
All right. Just so you know what the numbers are, what the real numbers are.
So, what we're saying is that our storm would be 180 cubic feet, and theirs is 480 cubic feet deep, right? So, and this is per hour, so for one hour?
No, for one inch... no, for an inch of rainfall. For an inch of rainfall, right.
Okay, so...
And they... I mean, they do a good job in collecting the water from the driveway and from the house and piping it directly into the seepage beds. It's not really a surface runoff. It's piped. The house is piped. And most of the driveway is piped, so...
Oh, okay.
There's that positive system that they're installing to make sure the water goes right into the seepage bed and not overground.
So, how many inches?
Seepage bed will hold 480 cubic feet.
That's the total volume. Now, what you have to include is that seepage bed will allow about 230 cubic feet of water to percolate into the ground every 24 hours. So, you've got water coming in, and you've got water going out at the same time. It's like a bathtub that has part of the drain open, okay, so...
I see. So, how... I'm trying to figure this out. So, how many inches of rain will be accommodated in 480?
Is it 180 cubic feet per inch?
Yeah. Based upon your calculation.
Okay. So, in three hours, it would overflow. That would be 5,400?
So, three hours.
Might be a little longer.
Two hours and something, it would be overflowing?
No, no. It would take three inches of runoff.
Yeah.
Okay, before it started overflowing.
Oh.
It would hold three inches of runoff.
I see.
Okay.
Three inches of runoff.
And that's basically a two-year storm? Which is... Not that it happens every two years, but it has a 2% chance now.
Two inches.
50% chance of happening at any time in a given year.
Oh.
So, if it rains two... I'm sorry. If it rains two inches, that's...
That water will fit into the seepage bed.
It would.
Yes.
And then three inches...
Three inches would fit into the seepage bed. Four gets a little iffy.
Oh, four gets a little iffy. So, basically, most storms, it would collect it in there, but the bigger ones, it would overflow.
90% of the storms each year are less than one inch.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Well, 90% of the time, we get the water to deal with in the yard.
It's always the big ones that is the problem.
Right.
So, and if a big one's happening, it'll just be even bigger for us, is according to this.
Unless the township engineer and the design engineer agree that maybe it needs to be bigger.
It needs to be a little bigger.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, just...
Yeah.
I have one more comment. I mean, Angela explained all the technical part of it. In addition, when all this gets resolved, the applicant and homeowner must execute what's called an operation and maintenance agreement, okay, and put up money. So, it just doesn't get put in there and forgotten. They have to maintain it, and the township comes out at least three times in 10 years to inspect it and make sure it is working property. So, just keep that in mind also.
All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I have a question about that.
Okay.
Would it be reasonable to assume that this is very different from all of the other neighboring properties because it has an underground detention basin?
In this particular neighborhood, yeah. I think that's very valid.
So, all of the other houses are dumping that onto the ground, essentially, and that's running off on the neighboring properties. But in this case, this new property will be collecting their water and handling four inches in a 24-hour period.
Anything to say? Come on up. You're here. Come on up. Give us your name and address.
I'm Jessica Flowers. I'm directly behind them on Strathmore. I'm 307 Strathmore Road. I have a French drain, which has helped, but we do, on big storms, if there's already snow, and then it rains and that melts. If there's a hurricane, I still get water in the basement. So, I'm basically just here to listen in and see what's going to happen.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Nothing? Okay. You guys want to say anything in response to what these citizens have talked about?
I guess there's a lot of points to be made. I mean, I understand the concerns. I think the answers you gave are, you know, I agree with. I didn't do the math, but it sounded correct. I mean, I think that an excellent point is that there's not a stormwater system now. And so, if after four inches, there's zero runoff... So, for about 60% of this property is captured by that, by the downspouts, gutters, the yard drain in the front, that there will be zero runoff. And so, the baseline for this property is not zero. There is runoff now. And so, to get back to baseline would be something for a storm greater than that. And I think you were correct that, if I remember right, 96% of storms are the two-year storm or less. And so, that four inches plus more, you know, we're talking about... I don't know, guessing 97, 98% of storms, there's either no runoff or we're getting...
Can you speak to them, because they're the ones that are concerned about this?
Chris, don't misrepresent anything. You still aren't capturing all the runoff into the seepage bed. There is going to be runoff from the property, from lawn areas.
That's correct.
Okay. So, it's not zero runoff leaving the property in every case?
That's correct. And I thought I said about, we're capturing about 60% of it. So, that from that 60%, there'll be runoff. And Mrs. Eddy, she actually called me a few days ago, and we spoke for 15 minutes or so. I think I tried to answer her questions. I said, you know, people don't always believe the engineer from the applicant, so I suggested that maybe she speak to the township engineer, and ideally, he would answer things the same way as I did, and that would make her feel a little better. But I understand the concern.
All right. So...
I'm sorry. We're recording, so if you're going to talk, you've got to go up to the mic. Thanks.
You said that one inch of rain would account for 180 cubic feet. Is that right?
Based upon the numbers you gave me.
Okay.
The... how many gallons, you say? 1,300 and some gallons?
13, okay.
That equals 180 cubic feet.
So, the holding tank that you're putting in can hold how much?
400.
480.
480. So...
Plus, there's... while water's going in, water's seeping into the ground. That's another two.
I understand that it's going to go out, but it's not going to go out nearly as fast as it's going to be coming in.
No, but over 24 hours, half of it will drain out.
Right. So, two inches of rain would be 360 cubic feet. Three inches would be 540 cubic feet, which is more than 480.
Right. I don't disagree with that.
So, somewhere between two and three inches, it would reach capacity, I would think.
Well, take the 180 times three is 540. And add 230 to that, because that's how much is going to sink into the ground, and that's how much water...
230 is going to sink into it?
And within 24 hours, okay? So...
Okay. There was a percolation test?
Yes. They did percolation tests, and what they did is, when they designed the bed, the seepage bed, they only used half the infiltration rate that they actually measured. So, they're building in a safety factor of 2.0, okay? Which is common practice. So, really, the seepage bed probably will function better than what they're saying it will. But in order to be conservative with their analysis, they throw a safety factor of 2.0. So, instead of saying it percolates 260 cubic feet in a day, it only percolates 230 cubic feet a day.
Although, if the suggestion earlier in this meeting was that the house is a little bit smaller, that would... and with more trees, that would help our situation quite a bit.
Trees help with runoff. That's correct. But the other thing you have to remember is, the zoning ordinance allows a certain percentage for building coverage. And every property owner is entitled to that percentage, okay?
Yeah, we're aware of that.
So, there's no legal obligation for the developer to make the house smaller if he feels this is the house he wants to build, that he can market. He has that right by code.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And just to kind of add on to that, even if the builder doesn't, the immediate homeowner that he sells it to absolutely could, so long as they're within those maximum coverage requirements and setback regulations.
I have two more things. One is just that the stormwater management system is designed for the maximum impervious permitted on the lot. And so, what's proposed here, I believe, is 38%, and 45% is allowed. So, it's also designed for an extra 7% than what is there. And I agree with Mrs. Kirk that, you know, oftentimes, future homeowners want to add something, and so, it's designed ahead of time. Also, I want to mention this...
If that's the case, you've got to make that clear on the drawings so that in the future, someone doesn't ask for more stormwater management.
Okay. That typically is one of our general notes. And then also, I know the system looks small on the page, as I had told Mrs. Eddy. It's a five-foot diameter pipe system that's 16 feet long. It's a huge system with stone around it that, you know, there's a manhole there that you can lift up and a ladder in it that you can go down. It's not a small system. It's not a cheap system.
Are you familiar with rain tanks?
Yes.
Okay. I feel you get more bang for your buck with a rain tank than you do with a circular pipe.
So, I don't disagree with you, but most contractors and builders would, I think mostly because they are inexperienced with the plastic structures and feel that they're more expensive just right off the bat.
Okay. So, what I think I'd like to do here, or I'm speaking for the board, but I think it'd be best if you have your discussions with CHOC about the whole drainage or stormwater management system issue. Do whatever work you have to do with the plans to address comments. Take a look at the replacement tree requirements. Make sure you include, at least I think you should include, the trees that are already cut down. Revise the plans, resubmit them, and then hopefully, we'll be able to take action on the plan next time.
I understand. You know, as you know, every applicant is always hopeful that they'll get a decision quickly, and I think our, our hope with this one is that ultimately, this is a lot consolidation. This is two twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot wide lots that are being combined to a fifty-foot lot, and so, that's really why we're here. You know, as part of the requirements, we have to show the new house, but if this were a fifty-foot wide lot, we wouldn't have to come here for all of those things. So, I, I understand, but from, for my job, I also have to ask for the client that, you know, given the, the type of project that, you know, if we could get an approval with a condition to work with the township engineer, get Shade Tree approval, which we did go to them, and we'll have to resubmit, that would be preferred, but I, I understand.
Okay. Do I see anyone on the board that wants to make a motion? Don't be shy, speak up if you think we can move this along.
I'm on board with, I'm on board with, with support letting this move forward, as long as the Shade Tree Commission is getting another crack at making sure that they're happy with the tree replacements, especially considering that we were concerned about the, the trees that were removed from the property prior to the arborist review.
Okay, thank you. Well, you wanna make that into a motion, Jack?
Yeah. Motion to recommend approval of the, of the application, based on it meeting most of the requirements that we're looking at, and having feedback from the neighbors concerned about, primarily concerned about runoff, and having seen what the, that the house is going to contribute to the neighborhood, contingent on follow-up with the Shade Tree Commission and Shade Tree approval.
Okay. All right, so we wanna, we wanna make sure that the, the approval is conditioned upon the applicant addressing all the items in the township engineer's letter, right?
Yes.
That they have further dialogue and conversation with the township engineer as far as the design for the stormwater management system? That the Shade Tree Commission review the revised plan, understanding that a considerable number of trees were cut down before the plan was submitted?
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, I'll second that motion based upon those conditions. Maggie, you wanna call, wrong, Maggie, not Maggie, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Shannon. Mr. Fior de Mondo.
Yes.
Ms. Phillips.
Yes, in favor.
Mr. Montressor. Mr. Capuzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Okay, looks like you got a conditional approval, subject to all the conditions we spelled out, and good luck with your vote. Thank you. The other, only other item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our meeting on January twenty-seventh? Yes. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as. David Sexton, anybody have any comments, questions, or adjustments they'd like to make? No? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. And anybody else have anything they want to bring up before we adjourn? Nope.
Yes, actually, two things. The first is, can we get a Shade Tree liaison, liaison involved in the planning commission? Because this is a recurring situation where we're, are dealing with, what is the Shade Tree Commission doing, and how do they feel about something?
What, what I've suggested in the past with the Shade Tree Commission, especially when the comments, the planning commission, were very heavily relying on situations with landscaping, is, you know, reach out to them and ask them for their comments. That's not always the case, it's not always something that happens. Actually, putting a liaison on the board would not happen, we would need to do that by ordinance, and we are, we aren't able to have an even number of people on the planning commission itself. So, I, I mean, having a dialogue with them is absolutely appropriate, but actually seating one of them on the board would not, wouldn't be something that we'd be able to do.
Thank you, Kelly. The other question I had is, can we have an update on the comprehensive plan?
Sure can, so, at our last meeting, we actually had a physical draft that we went through. There are some minor changes that we're looking at making, dotting i's, crossing t's. We're going to be re-reviewing for hopefully, the final draft at our next meeting, which will be held on March twenty-third. And at that meeting, hopefully, we will, the steering committee is we, not the royal we, well, excuse me, be, you know, finalizing all of those things and preparing it for distribution to residents, stakeholders, just anyone who's particularly interested, Delaware County Planning Commission, neighboring communities, school district, et cetera. At that point, we are, you know, going to get comments from all of those people, and somewhere within a, at least a thirty-day period, it will be before the planning commission. So, we're hoping for sometime in May, to be before this board. From there, I'm absolutely certain that it's not going to be one meeting before the planning commission, but that will be the first of public meetings. We'll take in all of those comments, address what we can, make changes where we need to, and, you know, re-review it before going to the Board of Commissioners at a public hearing, followed by at least two readings of an ordinance to adopt the comprehensive plan.
Two things, Kelly, that's, I think it's a forty-five day review period for.
Right, no, for the, for the, for the Board of Commissioners.
Right.
Right, so I'm saying, we were giving at least thirty days between distributing the draft and the planning commission meeting.
Okay.
Right.
Would you make sure that Charlie makes enough hard copies so that each member of the planning commission gets a hard copy?
I will.
Because it's a, it's a lengthy document, and we don't get reimbursed for ink and paper.
I'm curious to know, given our place in the process, why it doesn't make sense for us to receive, start receiving the material, not to give input, but to start getting up to speeds, it's gonna be so lengthy, and get familiar, because I think we can participate in a more intelligent way if we understand how it iterates, as opposed to starting to look at it after it's been through a whole history, and then it's sort of like bringing somebody in late, and then they start raising things, oh, well, that was addressed before and so forth, what am I missing?
Right, so, we want to, so the steering committee was created to, to create this initial document. The planning commission provides input on that document to, you know, make sure that we're on the right path, you know, see if there's any comments here, and to provide public comment. It's not that we're trying to exclude anyone, but, but it gets to a point where, when you are creating a document, having too many voices sometimes overshadows, so that's just during the, you know, very, like, the planning process, and that's why it comes before the planning commission, goes before the county planning commission, so that we get input on, you know, where we're going, to make sure that, that, you know, we've kind of covered all the bases, so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel at every single area and every single board.
I understand, I know it's been said, but to help me be clear in my mind, what amount of time will we have once we receive the document?
You will get it as soon as it's prepared and we are comfortable with where it's at, so likely, the same time, that period that we'll be sending it, we'll be distributing it to everyone else.
Then we'll be responsible for digesting it and being able to speak to it within what time?
No, you won't be, you won't be responsible for presenting this, the committee, the steering committee will present it to this board. But the actual document will be provided to this board at least thirty days in advance.
I guess I'm used to being a high bench, so I would want to be at least as prepared as the presenters.
Sure, understood.
Can you please review for us exactly who's on the steering committee for the comprehensive?
Sure, so, the steering committee of stakeholders are two township employees, it's myself and the Recreation Director, Brian Barrett. Mr. Capuzzi is one of our defining members. There is Kathy Case, the Historical Commission, Rich Kerr, who is involved in many of the trail work, he is a retired transportation engineer, yes?
Exactly.
Yeah, so he's been doing a lot of the transportation and trail work, and I'm missing people.
There are four commissioners on that.
Right, well, but the, I got all the, everybody else, yes? So, in the commissioner, there's also a commissioners committee for the comp plan, which includes Jerry Hart, Kevin McCloskey, Steve D'Amelio, and.
Larry Holmes.
Larry Holmes, but I, was he, oh, it is Larry Holmes, you're right, sorry.
I'm more confused than I was about the schedule, so you're having a meeting on March?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, and at that meeting, there's gonna be.
No, that is just, that is just for the steering committee and the commissioners, comp plan committee to just finalize the document.
Yes.
Again, just, basically, I've been brushing up on a couple typos and some other minor, minor details.
That'll be a meeting that approves, at least the steering committee approves the document for publication.
We don't approve, but we, we're just preparing it for distribution.
And at that meeting, the consultant is also gonna give us a firm schedule as we move forward. So, on the twenty-third of March, we should have a schedule that says, you know, on May fourteenth, the planning commission will have a hearing to review the plan with the public, some date in May, hopefully.
How much time does the community have, the citizens, the people we supposedly represent, represent, to review the draft that comes out on around March twenty-third?
So, we will not schedule, we will not schedule a planning commission without at least thirty days in between the issue, the distribution of that comprehensive plan and the first planning commission meeting. I'm absolutely certain there's going to be more than one planning commission meeting where that plan is discussed. Following that, it goes to a public hearing before the Board of Commissioners, that's where the forty-five days comes in. So, if there are changes between the planning commission and that public hearing, we're required to give forty-five days notice between, between those two dates. Following that, it's two readings at Board of Commissioners meetings as an ordinance. So, we're talking a lot of time for people to be involved, to look at these documents, to attend public, plenty of public meetings, certainly not anything, you know, cloak and dagger. If somebody wants to attend or to discuss it, they have plenty of.
Knowing, knowing my civic association and others and human nature.
One of the people I believe that's on your civic association is in the steering committee.
Sorry?
Is Kathy not in the Brinford Civic?
She's in the organization.
Right, so she's also on the steering committee, so I'm absolutely certain that you'll be aware.
Oh, I'm sure they'll know about it, but knowing the commission, knowing the civic association, thirty days to review and comment is extremely tight, because your, your board is gonna have to meet, the leadership is gonna meet, and then they'll want to have a meeting of the citizens who want to attend the meeting, I mean, there'll be more.
Understood, and again.
I think that's true throughout.
There's gonna be more.
Excuse me, excuse me, I think that's true throughout the township, probably, the Brinford group is more organized than, than some, but I would think thirty days is quite tight.
Okay, so, thirty days is the minimum that we established between when we were going to distribute that draft and when we would hold a planning commission meeting, it may not be thirty days, it will likely be longer because of when the meetings take place, when these meetings take place. That said, there's going to be other meetings on top of that, that's not going to be the only meeting, there's, that's going to be the first of at least a few public meetings, so at least one planning commission meeting, likely at least two, plus the public hearing where people will be able to comment there, plus two Board of Commissioners meetings. We're talking at least five public meetings over a period of at least likely four months. I'm not sure that, that we can really provide additional time on top of that, considering that we've been working on the, or trying to get the comp plan in progress for about four years now.
No, because, I yield.
Okay. I have a content question, separate from inclusion versus exclusion, separate from timing and how many meetings and so forth, content-wise, when this document comes out, does this represent essentially the final product of the two steering committees, their thinking on what's best, obviously, subject to whatever inputs and negotiations or adjustments or corrections, but am I, will I be reading a first draft, or will I be reading what the, essentially, is the final best effort is of the steering committees?
It's essentially the final best effort, but not, but certainly not written in stone.
Right, right.
It's, you know, it's a, it's a document that was created by the, the consultant that we've hired to help us along this process, in addition to, you know, key members of groups to provide input, I'm sorry, I missed Tom Kelly? Yes.
Tom Kelly.
Tom or Don, Don, I always get them confused. So, you know, we're talking about business people, you know, township staff, different people with different backgrounds of engineering, and it's going, the comprehensive plan is, it's a future land use plan essentially, it's not, but even that is not something written in stone, it's where we want to be, it's where we think we should be, it's what we would like to work towards, and what, when we review these plans, or the zoning hearing board reviews their plans, or the Board of Commissioners puts into place ordinances, what they should be reflecting on when they think about those things and what they should be adopting. It's not, it's not a zoning ordinance, it's not a land development ordinance, those come later, those amendments will come as a result of, hopefully, of this, this document, but it's essentially just a guidebook of what we want to do.
That helps me understand better, because what I'm understanding now, reflect back and, you know, firm or correct, is that your two steering groups are essentially the drafters. They're gonna put out a product that they think is in the best interest, the optimal material, optimal approaches for the township going forward, and then other stakeholders start getting involved, as opposed to you're putting in a draft and it's gonna iterate through all the different groups.
Right.
Which is where I started, which is why I'm saying, if we're iterating, it would be nice to understand the history so we can approach it more intelligently and not, you know, beat to death things that are even beaten to death, but it's not that situation, so thank you.
There were two meetings, I believe, of, for public comment already, so.
There were workshops, where we did, yeah, there was a, an in-person workshop, as well as Zoom version of that same workshop, where we were just looking for input at that point, so we could help create the draft, make sure that we were on the right path with certain things, see where maybe different areas needed to be addressed or, you know, further addressed. see where maybe different areas needed to be addressed or, you know, further addressed. So, yeah, there absolutely has been public involvement up until this point. There was also surveys distributed prior to that. I believe two or three, two or three surveys, I want to say two. So we have absolutely been receiving public comment this whole process. But this will be the time where we actually present what we've found and what we've come up with for public comment on the actual product itself.
Well, I would still encourage more time at the initial stretch to allow the communities to read it, absorb it, meet with their constituents. And maybe in the long run, that would be more efficient and shorten the end time when people start coming in later after our first meetings to then say, oh, we're not happy with this, we want to make more changes.
We'll discuss with their consultants.
Maybe get that all at once and then be upfront by giving a little more time at the first stage.
Well, we'll bring it up at the next meeting.
I'd like to put a footnote to what he's saying. The opposite way of trying to get to the same place is really doing a bang-up job of pushing it out there, communicating it out to every nook and cranny of the township so that it's right there and they know you grabbed their attention.
That is the plan.
Anybody have anything else?
Finished. I just wanted to make a comment. I found this very interesting and you brought up some things I hadn't thought about. Doing good work and thank you for your...
Oh, you're welcome. Well, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, that's it, thank you. Thanks for coming out, guys.